Where is Morales? Where is Morales?
Hello, um, welcome everybody. Thank you for coming out on this evening. It was very sunny and it started to turn. I think we're waiting for one more candidate to show up. So we might have one more person come and join us. Welcome to the first Seattle City Council District Two Candidate Forum that's open to all the public members. I'm Bill Caldwell and I'm a member of Speak Out Seattle. Also, we want to say hello to the people who are watching us on the YouTube livestream that Steve is very kindly making sure that people at home can watch. Or you can also watch later when you go back home if there are some answers from the candidates that you weren't able to remember. First, there's some housekeeping. The restrooms are located just to the left of the front door where you walked in. Also, the community club asks that we are careful to separate the garbage, the yard waste, and the recycling, or the compost, into separate bins that are there in the back. So if you're eating anything or having any of our food items, they just want us to be careful to separate that. And we also ask if everybody here could silent their cellphones or turn them to vibrate mode. And we're hoping the candidates could do that too. Lastly, we're going to have a majority of the questions for the forum come from the audience members. So there was a table just as soon as you came in the front door to the left. If you didn't have a chance to write down your question on a three-by-five card and you'd still like to do that, if you have some time, we will have two of our own questions from our organization. And then the majority of all of the other questions are going to come from audience members who know what the most pressing issues are here in District Two. So let me tell you a little bit about Speak Out Seattle, the organization that is hosting tonight's forum. Speak Out Seattle is a nonprofit, nonpartisan, grassroots citizens advocacy group. We have over 2,000 members who live in every area of Seattle. We're fortunate to have members of every race, gender, and age. And we welcome people from all across the political spectrum, as long as they agree to our group's norms of respectful communication. In truth, we hear that the biggest percentage of our members have never engaged in any kind of political activity in the past. But they want to get active now because of the current state affairs in Seattle. We believe that people should be able to discuss issues that they disagree with in a civil manner. Our stance is that we advocate for evidence-based and compassionate approaches to addressing the important and very pressing issues of public safety, homelessness, and addiction. We focus on these issues because we love our city. We want it to be safe for our families, for our children, and for all of our neighbors. Those who are housed and those who are unhoused. We're especially concerned for those who are vulnerable and at risk of being harmed or causing harm due to untreated mental illness or addiction. You can get more information about Speak Out Seattle at the welcome desk that was right there by the front entrance where you came in, or by visiting our website, or looking at our Facebook page. Tonight, however, we're here to learn about the candidates who are running for Seattle City Council District Number Two and the questions that you all submit. We did invite all seven candidates who've declared for District Two to participate tonight. They were all welcomed and encouraged and received multiple invitations. We're grateful for the five candidates who did accept and are taking the time to be here tonight to speak with all of us. We all have important choices to make in the primary election coming up this summer. It's going to be on August 6th. That primary election will determine who the final two candidates are who will go on to the general election in November to represent us in the Seattle City Council. So our hope is that the forum will educate us all about who the candidates are and what their ideas are for serving Seattle if they get elected. I want to say thanks to the volunteers who are here from Speak Out Seattle who are giving up their time and their money and resources so that we can have this forum and six other forums. Our goal is to hold a forum in every single city council district in Seattle this spring. And if we don't get exhausted from the effort, we'll also do it after the primary election. We're very thankful to the staff of the Seattle Ethics and Elections Committee who are here tonight. They accepted our invitation to come to come and speak with us all about the Democracy Voucher Program. I don't know if people received those in the mail, probably most people did. Should we have questions about those or how to use those? The staff at the table are there. We also have workers and the director, Jim Miller, of the Millionaires Club. The Millionaires Club helped us with setup. They're a nonprofit agency that connects people with dignified jobs and support services. They provide job training, meals, vision service, career coaching, and a lot of other things. So thank them for being here. All right, so let's get the forum started. It is my pleasure to introduce our moderator for tonight's forum. His name is Mike Lewis. He's a co-host of the popular Cairo radio show Candy, Mike, and Todd. It airs weekday afternoons on Cairo, 97.3. I think it starts at 3 o'clock?
Three to seven.
Three to seven. Prior to the Candy, Mike, and Todd show, Mike worked as a reporter for Cairo. And he is also a longtime reporter and columnist for the Seattle Post-Intelligencer. Mike is also a small business owner and co-owns the Streamline Tavern in Lower Queen Anne, which is a great neighborhood pub. So please welcome Mike Lewis and thank him for being the moderator today.
All right, we just have a few ground rules for this event, for the candidate and the audience. Actually, where's your mic?
It's right.
It's not very long.
We have just a few ground rules for this event, for the candidates and for the audience. One, please be respectful of each other. In the interest of time and common courtesy, please refrain from applauding or cheering for proposals or responses from candidates, with one exception, and I'll explain that in a moment. We expect the same from the candidates. For the candidates, the questions will have a response time of one minute, except for the final closing statement where you will have 30 seconds to wrap up. To keep track of time, we will have a time clock that you can all see, it's right over there. We have a time clock that you can all see. Keep in mind that the clock starts at zero and moves to 60 seconds, not the other way around. I will introduce each candidate by name in just a moment. Audience, please welcome each candidate with your applause after I introduce them. After that, we would ask that you refrain from applause or cheers to allow the candidates time to answer the questions. After the introductions and the first question, which will be done in alphabetical order, we will then rotate so each participant gets a chance to answer a question first. As for the questions, we have an introductory question to start for the candidates and then two that pertain to core issues of Speak Out Seattle. And then two that pertain to core issues, I'm sorry, and then the rest have been submitted by the audience via the index cards you filled out. And I may have a couple of questions myself. In the interest of time, not every question will be able to be answered that you folks have submitted. And I may rephrase the questions slightly just for clarity. And speaking of that, I'm not here to follow up with the candidates' answers. However, I may ask a follow-up question for clarity or specificity. Okay, let's meet the candidates. And just raise your hand whenever I say your name and then we'll get into the questions in a minute. We've got Henry Dennison. We have Ari Hoffman. We do not have Matthew Perkins yet. We have Phyllis Porter. And we have Mark Solomon. Okay, um, for starters, and we've got one-minute responses here. We'll start with Henry Dennison. Tell us who you are and why you are running.
Okay, um, my name is, he said, is Henry Dennison. I'm currently a rail worker, although I've been everything from a coal miner to textile worker to a Walmart overnight stalker in my life. I'm a candidate of the Socialist Workers Party, running to put forward a perspective, a fighting perspective, of a break, a complete break with the politics of the Democratic and Republican Parties, and building a movement that will replace the rule of the capitalist class with the rule by workers and farmers.
Okay, Ari Hoffman.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Ari Hoffman. I live half a mile in that direction from this very building. I got involved in Speak Out Seattle because it was a unique set of circumstances. Some RVs moved in next to some cemeteries that I manage up north in Seattle and caused about $300,000 worth of damage to them. Nobody helped us. We went to public officials, we asked for help. Nobody was available, nobody wanted to help us. And then the Ballard Town Hall happened. And for those of you who saw it and saw the video of it, one woman stood up and she was wearing a Speak Out Seattle t-shirt. And she said, "And what are you going to do about the Jewish cemeteries?" And that's how I found Speak Out Seattle. I said, "I have to thank that woman who stuck up for us when nobody else wanted to." And I found a group of people who are amazing and fantastic and help out and just want to fix their community and make it a better place. I'm an average guy who runs two businesses, who just wants to make his community better. And that's why I'm running for council. Thank you very much.
Phyllis Porter.
Hi, I have two children and I asked them both, go back to your childhood and tell me one of the most remarkable, one of the most memorable things that you could think of. And they both said at two different times, "Mom, I remember you struggling. You always work, but you struggle." I'm a person who lives in the community. And I feel that Seattle needs a responsive representative leader that has lived the experience in which most of the people here in this district are facing. I can go on and talk about all the different issues that I've gone through. I can also match it with all the experience of people dealing with the same thing in this community. So I'm here today because I want to be that responsive representative because I can actually look in their eyes and say, "I've been there and I feel you." So that's what I'm here for. Thank you.
All right, Mark Solomon.
Good evening, thank you for being here. My name is Mark Solomon. I am a lifelong Seattle resident. I was born and raised here. I live on North Beacon Hill in the home that my grandmother built. And I'm fortunate in that regard because if it wasn't for the fact that she paid for that house, I couldn't afford to live there. Housing affordability is something that I'm very concerned about. Displacement of our community is something I'm very concerned about. I've been a Crime Prevention Coordinator for Seattle Police Department for 29 years. I'm also an Air Force veteran. And I was a small business owner. I had a small security consulting business for a while. The reason I'm running is I want to make sure that the voices of our community are heard by the folks downtown. Too often, this community is being ignored. Too often, things are being done to us, not for us. And I want to make sure that your voices are heard, that your concerns are addressed, and that we actually get things done for the people of District Two. Thank you.
Okay, the first two, this one?
Yep.
First two questions are from Speak Out Seattle. And we will start with, uh, who do we start with?
Oh, um, start with Ari.
Start with Ari. Okay. First question for Ari, and then we'll rotate whoever gets to answer the question first. In 2014, 87 unsheltered people died in King County. In just three years, in just three years, by 2017, the number of deaths rose to 169. Can you describe how your recommended response to this emergency would reverse this trend and how quickly?
Excellent question. The biggest problem we have is we are not taking care of the people who are on the streets and we are not triaging them appropriately. What we need to do is have a place like Harbor Island where we bring in trailers to get people off the streets that have bunk beds in them, that have bathrooms in them, that have showers in them, and then figure out what is the problem. There is no silver bullet for the crisis. There is a drug crisis, there is a mental health crisis, there is a housing affordability crisis. You need to get the person where they need to go, to the services that can help them the most. Otherwise, we are not being compassionate. Right now, we want to be progressive, but the system we have is regressive. Progressive, the root of that word is progress. Leaving people on the streets to die is not progressive. We need real solutions, real treatment options to help these people. And we need to start by triaging what is happening on our streets.
Phyllis, do you want, if anybody wants me to reread the question again?
Sure, go right ahead, please.
Uh, in 2014, 87 unsheltered people died in King County. In just three years, by 2017, that number of deaths rose to 169. Can you describe how your recommended response to this emergency would reverse this trend and how quickly?
We need to, can you hear me okay? We need to stop allowing people to live in unsanctioned encampments. We need to have those people move to the sanctioned encampments. Often, when this is going on, a lot of time, people, they can't help that they're in the situation in which they are. So it's up to the city's responsibility. We know we cannot criminalize people that are living on the streets, so we know it's up to the city. The city is the one who got us into this situation. And we need to make sure we can help those people get out. So take them away from the, take them away from the encampments that are unsanctioned, put them in sanctioned, go from low bearing, go to permanent houses. Seattle needs to build housing right now and meet the people where they are and get them off the streets.
Mark Solomon.
There is no question that we have a mental health issue. There's no question that we have a substance abuse issue. And what we need to be doing is investing our dollars smarter in prevention intervention. Not only repurposed housing, not only housing first, but I look at housing first as an entry point. And then, once they're in, hit them immediately with wraparound services, intensive case management. Because without doing that, without addressing the causes of why people are suffering, why they're dying, it's not going to change. We also need to have, we also need to have housing. We can't do this without housing, we can't do it without low to moderate barrier shelter. So we need to invest our dollars smarter in solutions that we know work.
Henry Dennison.
Well, this is a, this is a situation that does not stop at the borders of Seattle. And it's going to take a much larger solution than just that. But our campaign puts forward perspective. We have to fight for, we have to fight for what people need. Mental health care has been completely, has been gutted to a point of where there just isn't anything available. Isn't nearly enough available for the demand that we see out on the streets. The, uh, and it's exacerbated by the drug crisis. There isn't enough treatment, there aren't enough treatment, uh, place, aren't enough placements for that. There are not enough, not enough clinics, not, people get told, when people want to quit, it's when there ought to be a place for them. And there isn't necessarily, they may have to wait, well, you can wait a month. Well, this is not going to, this does nothing for the crisis. We need a massive public works program involving building housing, but involving putting, putting mental health resources and drug treatment resources at hand for people.
Okay, this is Speak Out Seattle's second question. Uh, and the first, it'll go first to, uh, Phyllis. A lot of people have expressed to Speak Out Seattle that they do not feel elected officials are responsive to concerns about public safety. If elected, what specific policies or actions would you focus on to address these concerns?
Everyone in every community has the right to walk, to bike, to drive, or to get to where they need to be safely. I will continue to work, especially in this area. I want to continue to work on Ranger Avenue to make sure that no more cars are running into buildings, no more cars are running into people. I will also look at all the other areas within the city, within District Two, and make sure that whatever issues that are out there, that I want to hear. I want to meet each and every one of you, and I want to listen to you. Tell me what the problem is. I know what a lot of the problems are, but I want to hear directly from you so I can go to City Hall and say, "Look, this is what the community is saying. This is not about me." I want to be that reflective, that reflective leader that can take your voice to City Hall and get things done.
Mark Solomon.
Do you need to speak?
Yeah, no. A lot of people have expressed to Speak Out Seattle they do not feel elected officials are responsive to concerns about public safety. If elected, what specific policies or actions would you focus on to address these concerns?
responsiveness to the concerns of the folks in this community is one of the reasons that I am running. Because I've heard that same thing, that City Council is ignoring the people in this district. You know, a good example being that there was a proposal to put in a safe lot at Genesee Park without any kind of community input. It was just going to happen and people were just supposed to accept it. I want to flip that script. I want to make sure that anything that's done in this community includes people in this community in that decision-making process. Public safety is what I've been doing for almost 30 years. So I've heard the concerns, I've been in the neighborhoods. I've been in the living rooms where people are talking about their concerns. And I want to make sure that those voices continue to be heard and that those concerns are definitely addressed. Another thing that's been very apparent to me and that I've heard is people are frustrated that the precinct command staff changes on a consistent basis. I want to make sure that our precinct commander stays in place for a number of years so they can build relationships.
Henry Dennison, please.
Yeah, uh, this was some, part of this was something that I learned quite a bit about and when I addressed the firefighters' union, some of the questions they had on that. So the part of this, this public, part of public safety is that they should have the staffing and the funding that they need to make sure that Seattle, they not only put out the fires, they're the ones who show up when somebody overdoses. And this is something I, I think that you should take a look at what their union says that they need. One part of, of public safety that doesn't always get addressed is that in the situations that we have seen in Seattle, if the, if cops brutalize or kill someone, they should face the same consequences as everyone else with prosecution and prison time.
Ari, do you need a question again or are you good?
I'm good, thank you. The Seattle Police Department is operating at 60% of its capacity. That's hundreds of officers we don't have on the streets anymore. And that's why we're having a safety problem. In the 1970s and 80s, when they needed to turn things around, they did two things. They addressed that they didn't have enough police officers and they worked to end the drug problems that were in the city. That's exactly what's going on right now. That's what we need to do. We need to focus on common sense, practical solutions. We need to support our emergency responders, our fire department, our police department, and fund them with everything that they need to get the job done, to keep us safe and to keep them safe as well. We shouldn't have to worry about whether or not somebody's going to come when we call 911. We should make sure that city departments like that are fully funded so that we can be safe, so that they can be safe, and so the people on the streets get the help that they need. Thank you.
On to our next question. If people didn't write down a question when you came in, we might get through all of these. So if you have a moment and you want to write down more, we still have room at the end.
You can give a question.
So the next question that we have is, uh, we'll start with Phyllis.
Yeah, we'll start with Mark.
We'll start with Mark?
Mark.
Okay, start with Mark. What can be done about people living in broken-down RVs? Can there be somewhere for them to go to get help and have security?
There are some approaches that we're doing right now regarding RVs. There's an RV remediation team, which is a team of officers that makes contact with these folks. They're definitely doing law enforcement, definitely following up on any complaints of criminal behavior. If they need assistance, we're going to give them the assistance they need to make sure that the vehicle's running. We want to make sure the vehicle is properly registered. We want to make sure the register is registered with them. If there's any criminal activity happening out of those, we want to get that addressed and prevent those RVs from coming back into the community. It's estimated that if we follow just three simple steps, make sure they run, make sure they're properly licensed and registered, and address some criminal activity, we can take care of 40% of the RVs that are out there on the street right now.
Henry?
As I said before, we need a massive public works program. We need housing. We need housing that is, goes beyond the market-based solutions that are being proposed. We need housing that, where there is a place for everyone who needs it to move into. I'm not sure that, I don't want to say that moving RVs around is going to help. This is, this is the end of the line for a lot of people who live, who live in places like that. It doesn't end at the Seattle city borders, the city limits. It's, I see this going up and down the railroad. You see a lot of homeless camps all over the place. But this is something that, this is something that can't be simply addressed by shuffling RVs around. This is something, in order to take care of the human beings who are living in those, we need housing that is worth, worthy of the name.
All right.
I had an RV catch fire around the corner from my office yesterday. It almost took out two businesses. The only reason the fire was put out so quickly was that the fire department happened to be at my office dealing with something else right beforehand. And they got to it and put it out. We don't know what was going on in that RV, but I can tell you for the last three years, I've watched RVs in my neighborhood that are dealing drugs, that are running child prostitution out of them. And that the people in these RVs are not from Seattle. The ones I have encountered came here because they know they can take advantage of the system. We need to address that problem first. Half of these RVs are not functional. They don't have tabs, their engines don't run. So people living in them, they don't have the resources, no better than living in a tent. And meanwhile, there is a guy who is buying the RVs at auction and then dropping them all over Seattle and renting them out to people. That all has to stop, or we will never stop what's happening with the RVs.
Do you want to hear it again?
Yes.
Sorry, I just, I think I just got rid of it. What could be done about people living in broken-down RVs? And can there be somewhere for them to go to get help and have security?
I think that's the problem that we're having right now. Nobody has the answers. But one of the things I said earlier, we need to stop the low sanct, the non-sanctioned encampments and get people to the sanctioned encampments. Also, I think Seattle could invest, invest in the missions, the shelters that are already here. They need more beds, they need more funding. Put money into that so we can have an immediate place for people to get off the street. Also, when we have RVs in neighborhoods, I think we need to also talk with the neighbors. Have the neighbors sit down with the people down at City Hall and talk about, "This is what's going on in the community, what can I do to help?" I know a lot of times when the RVs comes in, a lot of people don't want them there because of the, you know, the things that can happen around that. There's drugs, there's needles left behind, and you have children or whatever the case may be. But I think if we all would just sit down at the table and talk about it and go back to City Hall and say, "This is what can be done." But right now, invest in, go ahead and invest in the shelters that we have.
Uh, first question this time is for Henry. Henry, the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals ruled that cities have limited power to enforce no trespass laws in green belts and under bridges because lying down to sleep is life-sustaining. Cities can't bar people from sleeping on public property unless somewhere else is provided. That somewhere else, what has been suggested are FEMA-style dormitory tents, perhaps at, uh, at Terminal Five, Bakich's Terminal Five. Uh, what would you, what was your idea for somewhere else?
As I repeat, we need a massive public works program to build housing that people need, among other things, at union scale, which addresses another part of the carnage that we face, which is what jobs pay around here, and it's, or anyplace. This is, this is, this is part of what people face, is the inability to afford a place to live. And it's, everything keeps getting compounded with the problems with the mental health crisis, with the drug crisis. It's, it's not one neat little picture. But it is a, it is fighting for a public works program, I think, that is the only way forward out of this. The, uh, the idea of shuttling people off onto a patch of concrete out in the port, I think, is not the solution that, uh, it's, we're talking about the lives of human beings, however chewed up and spit out, people have, have gotten by this system. But we are looking at fellow human beings in this.
Got a question again? All right, sure. The Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals ruled that cities have limited power to enforce, quote, "no trespass laws in green belts and under bridges" because lying down to sleep is life-sustaining and cities can't bar people from sleeping on public property unless somewhere else is provided. Essentially, where is that somewhere else?
First thing we need to do is appeal that. Ninth Circuit Court gets turned over a lot. There's no reason we shouldn't be appealing that the same way they appeal everything else in the city they don't like. But we should also be discussing the fact that we should be bringing businesses into the conversation. There are businesses like Microsoft and Amazon that do things with various places and shelters. And instead of demonizing them, we should find a way to work together with them to make them part of the conversation so we can build shelters that everybody has one. The other thing we need to do is look at the nonprofits that are getting money from the city right now that are not performing. Some of them are sitting on a lot of property. And there are properties available that could be used for shelters. I know of one right now that is a dormitory that could be used for shelters. I don't know why it's not being used because we need to get people housing. We need to get them shelters and we need to triage them and make sure they get the help that they need. And there's no And there's no reason, if we don't use, if we use those solutions, that we shouldn't be able to find our way to solve that problem.
We need to, thank you. We need to think outside the box. We need to provide incentives for people that are on the street. There's a lot of people that are on the street, some for different reasons. But for some that have integrity, they want a job, they want to do something. So, why don't we have something set up to where we can have resources? We can put you to work and take you off the street. You work for us, there's graffiti all over the city that needs to be cleaned up. Everybody may not be able to get into the best high-paying job, but some people, just to have their integrity, they would love to take a job. We've also got to stop on the marketing-based solutions. Right now, our housing is down forty percent. And until we can get that moved up, homelessness is going to continue. So, again, work on the homelessness, get them in houses, give them other incentives to get them off the street now.
Mark.
So, in addition to the Ninth Circuit Court decision, previous to that, there was an Eighth Circuit Court decision, Mark, versus Boise, where again, it was saying that you can't tell me to move off the street if you don't have any place for me to go. So, bottom line, we have to have some place for people to go. That does mean investing in low-to-moderate barrier shelters. That does mean we need to build more affordable units. It does mean that we need to at least look at some FEMA-style tents. Maybe we look at the model that Tacoma has, where they have the tents within the tents to get people at least off the street. Yet, we also need to make sure that there's effective case management that addresses the underlying causes that may have these folks out there on the street in the first place because we need, we need to, we need them to participate in wanting to get off the street. And we need to involve the community. We definitely need to involve our community partners in the faith-based community as well as our business community.
Okay, the first question's going to be for Ari. Ari, should we focus on SDOT or Seattle's Department of Transportation funding on increasing walkability and parkability in on Othello and Dunlap areas so two-way roads aren't reduced to one-way roads?
Show of hands, how many people had a problem getting here tonight? So, the first thing we need to think about, everybody's talking about bike lanes all the time. How about sidewalks first and streets that actually don't have potholes in them that you can drive on without needing an off-road vehicle? Can we start with that? Can we start with this street right here? What they're doing with the bike lanes is they're actually taking out access to a lot of the houses. And now, people can't get out of their houses. They can't park next to where their house is. They can't drop off their children. The elderly can't get to vehicles. I was doorbelling over there last night and everybody had the same problem. The bike lanes, where the bikes, the cyclists in this neighborhood don't even go that way. I ride my bike eighteen miles a day during the summer. I don't go that way. I go down to the lake, just like everybody else does. And they're putting the bike lanes here and what they're doing is they're blocking all these houses where people need the access to the street. I drop off one of my son's friends every single Thursday night. He can't get to his house because I have nowhere to go. So, what we need to do is increase walkability with sidewalks. We need to increase access with roads. And we need to not focus so much on two-point-five percent of the commuters who commute via bicycle.
Absolutely. Should we focus on SDOT, should we focus SDOT funding on increasing walkability and parkability in Othello and, in the Othello and Dunlap area so that two-way roads aren't reduced to one-way roads?
Yes, I think we should look to SDOT. SDOT is the person we go to. They have the money. They can get the work done. Well, we go to the city to get the money, but yes. If you look at, it actually, let's put it this way. You help everybody. Everybody has a right to the street. You may live in a house, you may have a driveway, you may not be able to get out. That's your opportunity to get up and talk about it. You may be in an area where you have to take a bike to work and you can't ride it because there's not bike lanes. Everybody doesn't have a car, everybody doesn't have a bike. But I think everybody needs to come to the table and talk it out and find out what's good for everybody because no one is ever going to be completely happy. So, we have to hear from everybody. And one other thing, we come to meetings sometimes, but when, but when the meeting's on the table and we need you there, everybody needs to show up. A lot of times, what happened, the decisions are made at downtown. And then, when things are implemented, people are upset. So, please, use your voice and come and talk about what we need so we can aim for those things. And reach out to advocacy groups, too. They can get things going.
There are neighborhoods not too far from here that do not have sidewalks. Now, I'm thinking about the Brighton neighborhood, you know, into the Dunlap neighborhood between Othello and Cloverdale, MLK and Rainier, where if you want to walk, you're walking out in the street because there are no sidewalks for you. I want to see our neighborhoods have sidewalks so that people are not forced to walk out to the street and risk getting hit because they're just trying to get to their neighbor's house or trying to get to the grocery store. I want SDOT to focus on vegetation maintenance and sidewalk maintenance and street maintenance so that, again, as cars are coming by, your vision is not obstructed by overgrowth that's taken over the sidewalk. And again, forcing people out to the street. And yes, let's fix the dang potholes. Can we do that? Please. You know, after the snowstorm and looking at all the damage that was caused on the streets, come on, we can do better.
Henry?
And all these things that are being raised are a good, are a good subject for a massive public works program, from cutting back, cutting back the overgrowth, building sidewalks, fixing the potholes is a piece of what we need at union wage and with control by the workers on the job, doing the work over the safety conditions of their job with the right to shut the job down and fix the safety conditions before they continue.
Okay, first question this time is for Phyllis. Phyllis, we were just in the district, now we're going to go a little more broadly, citywide. What's the most important issue facing Seattle right now and how would you address that problem?
I think it's a tie between homelessness and affordability. They kind of go together. Like I said earlier, that we've, we've worked so much with the marketing-based solution that has gone down forty percent. And until we can get other houses, until we can get more houses done, we're going to continue to have this same cycle. Right now, the developers come in and they spend, they can, they can make a choice. We can put a certain amount of money into a fund or either we can build low-income housing. So, I think that fund should kind of just be wiped away. So, when the developers come in, they have to actually put the money, I mean, they have to directly build more affordable housing. Also, when there's buildings that are going to be sold and the developer wants to buy them, I think when the building goes up and you have twenty-five people in one building that they're tearing down, that has already been processed through low income, I think they need to be rolled directly over. So, therefore, they don't have to get out and do the paperwork or stress or feel like they are going to be displaced.
The biggest issue I feel that is facing the city, again, let's just call it affordable livability because that does include housing. It does include being able to, you know, find, not, not just market rate, but working family rate places to live. It does touch on the issue of homelessness because one of the things that drives people into homelessness is not being afford, not being able to afford to live in a place that they're currently in. Income insecurity plays into that. People wind up homeless because they lost a job or they have, you know, medical expenses. So, it all ties in together. So, having more housing that's available, having more, you know, housing options. And again, that will help us address, you know, some of the issues with homelessness and housing instability.
Henry?
We need jobs that pay something, jobs that pay a livable wage. You don't have to have three of them to pay the rent. Need treatment for people who need it for mental health problems and for drug addiction. We need housing that people can afford. This is going, this is going to take a fight. And I, I don't want to sound like I'm saying, we'll just snap our fingers and do this. As I said, this is bigger than just Seattle. It's bigger than District Two, it's bigger than Seattle. And what we're talking about, we'll cut into profitability for those who invested in housing. They're not going to make more profit if housing prices go down, but we can't worry about that. To do this, to demand this is going to take a movement. We've got to think about the movements that built the unions in the nineteen thirties, the movement that ended Jim Crow segregation, the movement that built, the women's movement, fought for women's rights, the movement that got the US out of the war in Vietnam. It's on scales like those all wrapped up together. This is the kind of fight we're going to have to put together. Otherwise, we're going to get the same conditions continuing and continuing or getting worse.
We need to stop calling this a homeless crisis. We need to call for what it is. It's a drug crisis, it's a mental health crisis. In the Seattle City Charter, there is a responsibility for sanitariums. The fact that Western State Hospital got deaccredited and defunded, that's on us. We need to make sure that we have the best facilities available. We need to make sure that these people get the care they need. And with regard to housing affordability, not everything costs money. In the nineteen thirties and forties, when Boeing came to town, there was not a housing shortage when thousands of people moved here overnight for World War II because they could build what they needed to build. I have a house up on Juno Street that I'm trying to build. I've been trying to build it for three years and I can't get a permit on it. Can't get a permit on it. We can solve this with changes to the regulations in the codes for construction. I have some contractors that won't even work in Seattle anymore because they can't deal with the owner's regulations. We need to do that and fix that so people can build and address the other crises. Thank you.
First question for Mark. Just yesterday, the US Attorney for this district declared that Seattle could not, or he would not, he would sue the city if it pushed for supervised injection sites. Should the city, should the city attorney Pete Holmes fight this or should he acquiesce?
I say no to safe injection sites, period.
So, I agree. Henry?
We need treatment. We need slots available for people who are, who want to get off drugs at the time they want. We need mental health treatment. We need all of this. People want to keep their loved ones alive, but this is, this is something that we've got to... Everything is just kicking the can down the road until there is treatment for the people who need it.
All right, Henry, you have a follow-up on that. So, do you support supervised injection sites or not?
Without treatment, I'm not sure what the point is.
All right.
I don't believe that safe injection sites should be called safe injection sites. There's nothing safe about them. It's injecting poison into somebody and then hoping for a better end result. It's not going to happen. If you need medical supervision for what you're doing, it's not safe. So, what we need to do is stop bailing water out of the bottom of the ship and actually deal with the problem, which is treatment issues. We need to make sure that people have all the treatment solutions they need in order to get off drugs. This has affected my family personally, relatives of mine. You can't keep doing enabling behavior and expecting these things to change. So, I will also be a no on safe injection sites because there's nothing safe about them.
I had a brother, three days ago, just walked into a drug treatment center and said, "I don't want to live like this anymore. I want help." They took him in. If there had been a drug, a safe drug site, would he have gone in, would he have finally made that decision because it would have been so readily available for him? So, I'm going to say no. No.
First question for Henry. Henry, would you have supported the Amazon, not a head tax, actually, it was a head tax for large companies, but Amazon got a lot of the attention over it? Would you have supported that? Per employee head tax? I think what they ultimately voted and then repealed was two-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars per employee.
I don't believe that you can tax your way to socialism. The things that the Socialist Workers Party puts forward, demands on, demands on the ruling class of this country, demands for, to come up with a, to fund a massive public works program, but I'm not going to get into the minutia of, do we, does it come from here? Does it come from there? Which gets slowly eased into taxing working people. I don't believe in the taxation of working people to pay for what the capitalist class of this country needs to pay for. So, I was not, I was not a proponent of the, of the head tax, but it's, I also don't feel that I'm, I'm not running in order to help administer the crisis or tweak it for the ruling class of this country.
All right.
I spent a few weeks this spring delivering bounce houses for my company and I had a stack of petitions in my truck that I was getting people to sign to repeal the head tax. That's something I did because I was so against it. For every Amazon job or any other big company job, that creates three to five other jobs, grocers, mechanics, hairdressers. If you start killing off the businesses, and we saw that now Amazon is talking about moving a huge chunk of one of its departments over to Bellevue, you're going to lose them and we're going to be back in the nineteen seventies when we had companies leaving Seattle and nobody wanted to come here. We cannot do taxes like that. But the interesting thing to me is people who are for it or against it, there was, the people who thought we could tax our way to solve this problem, also thought to themselves that this may not be the way to go and that what we really need to do is address the problems because we need to know where the money's going before we consider any new taxes. We need an audit of where all this money's going. So, even if you're for the tax, you need to know where the money's going before you're going to spend it.
I don't think we should charge big companies what Seattle has brought forth. Seattle is the reason that we have the homelessness. Seattle is the reason that we have the issue that we have. Before Microsoft got here, they didn't have anything to do with it. So, once they're here, if you want to sit down at the table and talk with them and ask them, you know what, you're bringing in a lot of jobs, yes, we know that, but you're making a lot of money, too. Why don't we sit down at the table and see if you guys can contribute? But to say, we're going to get over two-hundred million from the company to help us with our homelessness, I think Seattle needs to clean that up.
The head tax, as it came about, I was definitely opposed to it. And I was opposed to it for a couple of reasons. One, where was the accountability? Where was the plan? What, where was the transparency? We're going to raise two-hundred, you know, fifty, two-hundred-and-seventy million dollars to address homelessness. Okay, how? You know, who's going to be in charge of that? So, that's one of the reasons that I was opposed to it because it was poorly thought out, poorly executed, and ill-designed. The other thing is, getting back to some of the things that have been said, you've got an employer that has forty-five thousand jobs, that's brought in forty-five thousand jobs downtown. Spin-off effects is fifty-three thousand additional jobs that are not Amazon and they've got ten thousand jobs waiting to be filled right now. How about we work with them and provide some internships and apprenticeships for young people in our district to be able to take advantage of those jobs that they have downtown? Let's bring it to the table. Let's work together. Let's work in partnership, not, you know, at cross purposes.
All right, I think the first question here. The city of Seattle is moving ahead with its mandatory housing affordability plan. It calls for upzoning in Beacon Hill, along MLK and Rainier Valley, among other places in this district. Do you think this is the right direction? Should it be more upzoning or should it be less?
If you look at other cities that upzoned, if you look at Vancouver, BC, it destroyed the community there because what happened was developers came in and said that your single-family house is now worth four or five townhomes. So, people took the four or five million dollars that they were offered and moved out of town. That's how you destroy communities. We can get more affordable housing by building along where the light rail is, right along where mass transit is. We won't be commuting, adding to the commuter congestion by doing that. We can add multi-story buildings over there and upzone those areas. But if you start upzoning Seward Park or Beacon Hill, you're going to start displacing the communities that are there and people are not going to be able to afford to stay anymore. So, that's the biggest problem I have with the upzoning. I think that you need to do it in a practical, common sense way that addresses the fact that these neighborhoods have been pushed out of where they've been before. I know the Jewish community is here in Seward Park because it got pushed out of the central district. We can't have that continuing to happen to communities because of upzoning. There are practical ways that we could upzone along corridors with mass transit and solve the problem.
Could you read it once?
Absolutely. City of Seattle is moving ahead with its mandatory housing affordability plan. For District Two, it calls for significant upzoning, Beacon Hill, along MLK, and Rainier Valley, among other places, in addition to single-family home neighborhoods. Do you think that this is the right direction for the city to go? Do you think it should be more upzoning or less?
I think right now, there's, since there's so many people that are, that need homes, that upzoning right now, I think it will work. Again, kind of like Ari said, I also think if you put places up around the transit area, because one other thing you want to do, if you have people based around the transit area, you can uplift that community, transit-oriented development, boost the economy in that area. You have people, you have new upzoning houses, you have commercial buildings on the bottom, You have people, you have new upzoning houses, you have commercial buildings on the bottom, they can work together, the business can make money, and the people can also have a place to live. Also, if the city was actually buying the property and putting it right there, that would be great if the city could own it. But as we continue to get more developers in, you know, you're going to look up and you're going to see upzoning everywhere. So I think we start there around the transit-oriented development area and start there, get the people in the houses, and then we talk, we research again, and we move forward again.
All right. One of the things I'm concerned about with the MHA is the potential unintended consequences of what it may have on single-family residences. As was mentioned, that, okay, you've got a single-family residence, but because the neighborhood's upzoned, now that residence is going to be taxed on what could potentially be there as opposed to the current use. So I want to make sure that, you know, as this is implemented, we look at those and mitigate any kind of those consequences. I'm also looking at how, like, North Beacon Hill is going to be impacted. We need to consider the basic infrastructure that's going to be needed, and changes that are going to be needed, whether it comes to roads, sewers, lighting. We need to look at, you know, transit. We need to look about, at, you know, walkability. All those things need to be, you know, considered. And what I'd like to do is work with folks in the community, in those communities that are looking at upzones, to make sure that anything that's going to adversely impact the community because of it does get addressed and gets addressed by council.
Henry.
Yeah, the massive influx of people coming in from just moving to Seattle and rising population here, just through the workings of capitalism, we're not making any new land. That part of the cost of a house or rent, and his land rent is going to go up. It's just a fact. It is going to keep on happening, and there's, there's one, you can do one tweak or another on it, until we have a massive housing, construction of housing that goes beyond what market solutions will, will produce, prices are going to go, are going to go up on this. And it is going to, whether neighborhoods get upzoned or not, the people who, affordable housing will be less and less and less affordable, less available for people. And this is what is going, this is just the way that capitalism works. There isn't a zero-sum solution. Everybody comes out happy. Everybody wins. That is not in, that is not in the cards. Just on the last answer, we'd like to go back for just a couple of seconds. I want to make very clear, I said I wasn't in favor of the, the Amazon tax, but I also was not opposed to it either. I really don't care one way or the other on that.
Okay, next question. Phyllis, this is for you. What is your experience with anti-racism work, and how do you propose addressing racial disparities within Seattle?
Wow, that's a good one. I like that one. You need to read that one again. When you look at South...
You don't even need to mark it.
When you look at South Seattle, you see a difference. Seattle is the most aver... Let me start over. 98118, out here in the South Seattle is the most diverse community in the country, in the country. So there's a lot of things that needs to be done. We need to start looking at everything through the eyes, through the lens of diversity and equity. I feel that Seattle needs to embrace diversity and also allow equity to everyone. Make sure that the services of the city is open to everybody, not just one, not, not the rich, not just people who have money or who don't struggle. But there's so many people that are out here struggling. We need to make sure that those people are taken care of. Criminal justice. We have a lot of people on the South End, we have a lot of people racial, we have a lot of people that have been in prison. When they get out, we need to make sure that they have the resources that they need so that they can move forward and make a better life. We have people that, like me, there are people, you deal with racial discrimination every single day. We need to sit down, we've been sitting down at the table, now we need to start listening to all of those comments that have come in through everybody.
Mark. Having grown up in the city, having, you know, grown up on Beacon Hill, living for a short time in the Central Area, just going about my daily life, I've experienced discrimination. I know what it's like to be followed in store. I know what it's like to be pulled over for driving while black. I've experienced that. I also know that where we were back then is not where we are now. There's been a tremendous amount of progress, and this community is so vibrant and so diverse, with so many voices, and so many experiences. We can learn from each other. If we just reach across the table, shake hands, and say hi to each other, you know? We have to remember that we are all human, and that we all have a heart. So let's keep that in mind, and we can get through those negative things.
Henry.
Could you read the question again?
Sure. What is your experience with anti-racism work, and how would you propose addressing racial disparities within Seattle?
Well, this is being, something throughout, throughout my life, I think the first political discussion I remember having was with my mother trying to explain to me what was going on in Birmingham in 1963 when I was seven years old, and it's been a part of my political activities my entire adult life. I think that in Seattle, where we've seen it come up most concretely, this is, these are very concrete things, most concretely are in the questions around the killing of black people by the, by the police, both in Seattle and elsewhere. And I think that a concrete response is, is the only way to deal with it. As I said before, cops kill somebody, cops go in, brutalize young black men, young black women, older black women, whatever. It's Charlene Lyles. Need to face the consequences, the same as everybody else: arrest, prosecution, and punishment.
I spent over 20 years working with children and teenagers, trying to teach them how to live lives as gentlemen and ladies, teaching them to give back to their communities. That's something that's very big with me. That's something I've done for this community. And if we really want people to celebrate each other's differences, you need to get them in a room together and talk to each other and learn about each other's cultures. The best part of this campaign for me has been going to all the different neighborhoods and meeting people outside of my neighborhood bubble, and meeting all these different communities because when I talk to them, I see how similar we are. Jews are one tenth of one percent of the world's population. Sometimes a very lonely place, to think how few of us there are. And it's so nice to be welcomed into all these communities. I don't get to try the food, which is unfortunate, but it's really, really nice to be in all these communities and see the diversity of all these communities. And once you start talking, you see how similar they are. Customs may be different, but there's so many similarities. So if somebody asked me if they could come to one of the events that we're having at the synagogue for the Rainier Beach community, and I said, "Sure, come and bring your friends, and tell me when your event is, and I'll come and bring my friends." That's how you start by addressing this.
Okay, first, this will be for Mark. "Even in the midst of one of the greatest housing booms in our city's history, there are squats of empty, undeveloped land around Rainier Beach. What will you do to support development in that area?"
Well, Rainier Beach is one of those areas that's slated for an upzone. And again, my concern is that whatever upzone is done there, to bring in housing or development doesn't displace the families that are already there. So again, what I want to do is work with the folks in the community, you know, what is going to benefit the community most? Phyllis and I had a chance to be at North Beacon Hill Council maybe a couple of days ago, and they talked about the MHA and what they did in working with the city to give modifications to that for what was planned for the development in Beacon Hill. And they got some concessions from, you know, from the group. Things that were added into the plan that were going to benefit Beacon Hill more than it was going to hurt them. I think we can do the same thing down here in Rainier Beach. So again, involve the community in the discussion as to what's going to be best for their community.
Henry, do you want to read the question?
Yeah, please.
"Even in the midst of one of the greatest housing booms in our city's history, there are squats of empty, undeveloped land around Rainier Beach. What would you do to support development in that area?"
Well, as I said, it sounds like a great place for part of a massive public works program to build a housing that we so desperately need. Thank you.
All right.
I don't think it matters what I would do. What I would love to do is reestablish the neighborhood councils that were disbanded so long ago, and hear from the communities what they want to do. Because there are so many things that I could come in and say, "Hey, I really feel like we should upzone MLK." But what if the people who live down there don't want to do it? As a city council member, I have to listen, and I want to listen, to what the constituents in my district have to say, and what their feelings are, and what they're passionate about. So I think we have to bring back the neighborhood councils, listen to their input, because also it makes a lot less work for the council member. Because if they come to you with a plan, and they say, "Here's the plan we want to do," good, let's go with that, as opposed to us imposing what we want on a city. I think we've all had enough of that.
Phil.
I've worked in Rainier Beach as a business manager, and I've worked with the businesses, I've worked with the community, I've worked with the people that live there. And often Rainier Beach thinks that Rainier Beach is the last place within the city that actually gets help or people that are being, are being heard. So again, you have to start with the community. Rainier Beach lets, they will tell you, you can't just come into our community and do what it is that you want to do. You need to sit down, talk to the community, get the advocacy group, get everybody involved because they do have big turnout. Talk to them, find out what it is that they need. Don't force yourself into Rainier Beach. Ask questions, hear them, and move forward.
Okay, I think we're... Ari? Oh, Henry. Henry. So a lot of the discussion tonight has been about providing additional services for people who need them, particularly when it comes to the homeless population in Seattle. But one member of the audience asked, "What should we do with people who refuse services?"
That's, I don't believe in arresting. This country's already got the largest percent of its population in prison of any country on planet Earth, so this is, this is not a step, you know, I guess that, I always assume when I hear questions like this, that the people thinking, "Well, we got to force, got to grab, take, have the police force them into something." You're not going to force, this is not, this not do anything for the human beings that it's being done to, and it doesn't stop any, any situation. But you do have a very serious mental health, you know, people need treatment for the mental health problems that they have, and I'm not a mental health professional, and I cannot give advice on how to, how to go ahead and do that. Leave that to people who know what they're doing on that.
I've been trying to learn as much as I can about the mental health issues and the drug issues that are going on in the city. And this is something I don't have a clear answer for yet, and I'm still studying up on it. But one thing I do know is that when I go to these recovery meetings with addicts and with their parents, a lot of times I hear, and it applied to my own family as well, thank God they hit rock bottom, thank God something, whether it was an arrest or a tragedy or something, changed their behavior. And if people aren't accepting services, it's just going to end in disaster. We have to find a solution for this, and I wish I could stand up here and say, "Yes, I have the answer." No, we have to study the data on whether forced treatment works or not, and I've seen it go both ways, I don't have an answer on that yet. But we need to make sure that the people get the services and the treatment they need because sometimes they're not in the right mindset in order to make that decision. And we may have to make it for them, but we need to study the data on if those programs are effective with forced treatment or anything like that.
Phil.
I think that's a great place to start. Start and find out what has been done, what has worked, and what has not worked. Also, so...
Can you read that once more?
Yeah, absolutely. There's been a lot of discussion about expanding services available to the homeless and for the mentally ill, the drug addicted. But what should we do with people who refuse services?
Okay. Again, we need to think outside of the box. Think outside of the box and come up with incentives of getting people off of the street. Also, we have to distinguish, it's not all about homeless, homelessness is homelessness, is drug addiction, and is mental health. We need to make sure we clarify each person to what it is that they're there for, and then move forward on that. But get people out of the street, and basically just identify, like I said, what each thing is, and move, move there.
If there are folks who do not want to participate in moving forward, then yeah, there are some other options we can look at. It does come down to making sure that treatment is available, that case management is available. But yeah, there is going to be that certain percentage of folks that do not want to move forward. There are a certain percentage of folks that do not want to participate. And when I think about those, you know, those individuals, it's like, you're part of a community. We need you to be part of the community. We need you to participate. And if you're not willing to participate, then maybe you need to go be part of somebody else's community because, you know, we want to help you, but you got to be willing to help yourself, you got to be willing to move forward and make progress. And yeah, it's going to be tough for some folks, but if they know that, you know, you don't get a pass, you got to participate. Let's bring them into the community.
I think this one starts with Ari. Ari, and this is somebody who is, I think, desperate for specifics. Explain specifically how your solutions to the homeless situation in Seattle is different than what the city is currently attempting to do, and how would you fund your proposal?
I'm not sure what the city's doing right now. So I can't really answer that part of the question specifically, so I apologize to whoever asked it. But if you want specifics of how we're going to address the drug and mental health crisis, then I'm happy to discuss that. The second part of the question?
How would you fund your proposals?
So right now, the city coffers are full, and this idea that they aren't is ridiculous. We all have the problem with our taxes going up on our houses, or our rent is going up, and we can't afford to live here anymore. The money's there. We need to audit the entire system and figure out where the money's going so we can better allocate it. That is the most specific I can get. Until I know where the money's going, what is a performing agency, what is a non-performing agency? We need to get the people the help they need, and right now we know that the status quo is not working. I'm a guy who gets things done. If you look at a, oh, I don't have time for that, I'll come back to that later, but we need to audit the entire system and figure out where the money's going because there's plenty of it. We just need to make sure it's getting to the right place.
Phil.
I agree with that. We do need to audit and find out where the money is going, where it's been allocated, and what, what's going to continue to happen with the money. Also, find affordable housing, get back into that. Like I said earlier, developers, when they come in, they want to buy places, they want to put money into the fund, stop that. Have them directly put, put that into affordable housing. Next thing, when developers should meet, also, the developers should meet with the community, talk to the community, and find out exactly what it is that they need. And money that is put into a fund, that money, again, that's put into the fund, we need to make sure that we're using that money right then. Don't wait till the end of the year. If people need places to live, people need places to go, we need to be able to use that money right there.
Got to echo a lot of what's already been said: accountability, transparency, how are you spending the money now? Do we need to raise additional funds, considering how big our tax base is right now, considering what we're spending right now? How about we just spend what we do smarter, in, you know, in the measures that we know that are effective, to get people treatment, to give them the services that they need, rather than continuing to spend money in a way that's ineffective? So again, let's be smart about how we're spending our money, and let's account for it.
Henry.
In every social movement we've seen that has made progress, having started with this coming up, but this is the scheme for how we're going to carry it out. We start out with what we need. What we need is housing. And eventually, if those who have the money, those who sit in the halls of power, and I don't mean the city council, I mean the people who sit in the halls of power, are afraid of the consequences of not coming up with the money, more than they're afraid of what it's going to cost them, they'll come up with it. Think of the movement to build the unions in the 1930s, the movement to get the US out of Vietnam, the movement that, that pushed all of this forward, the movement against Jim Crow, the fight to end Jim Crow segregation, the movement to, for women to win the right to choose an abortion if they want, something which also needs to be defended. All of these, all of these things didn't start out with saying, "Well, we're going to do, this is the exact scheme by which we're going to do it." What I'm talking about, the perspective I'm putting forward is not a perspective of moving a few dollars around and coming up with a cheap and easy solution. This is a fight to regain our own humanity, basically, as a class.
Okay, this is a question, and I'm guessing I have a clear sense where this person is coming from. I guess we're starting with...
Phyllis.
Phyllis, on this one. "How do you plan to persuade Pete Holmes to do his job?"
First, I want to have to sit down and have a talk with him. Sit down and talk. That's it. Find out where's he's coming from, where's he getting his ideas from? You know, he's an attorney. Where are you coming up with these ideas? Talk to him. Find out everything that you need to know so you can ask a question and you can get answers.
All right.
Well, yeah, actually, it is, sitting down with Pete, I know it. Well, yeah, actually, it is sitting down with Pete. I know where he lives. No, not that kind of way, no. But yeah, again, I know what the concern is. The concern is, you know, the revolving door of all the people that we, you know, the department arrests and the city attorney's office decides not to file a law. You know, or if it's a felony level, that the King County prosecutors decide not to file a law. It also comes down to, you know, the courts and the judges that decide, eh, well, we're just going to kick this, you know, kick this one back on the street. There needs to be an understanding on the part of our city attorneys and our county prosecutors that we really need to engage with them to make sure that they're working with us, to make sure that those who are predatory are taken, are dealt with. Right? So we need to sit down, we need to have that conversation, and it needs to continue.
My campaign is oriented not towards talking with the prosecutor, but mobilizing working people in the communities through the unions in Seattle, out of Seattle, in Washington, beyond, wherever. But building a movement, not convincing one official or another to run the system better. We're trying to replace the system rather than run it.
I'm not going to convince anybody of anything. You're going to convince people of something, because when they see that a whole bunch of citizens changed the entire government overnight, they'll get the message very, very quickly. The other thing you need to think about is this wasn't a failure of one person. This was a failure of the entire system. That's why the document is called the System Failure Document. If you're not familiar with it, it outlines 100 prolific offenders and shows how the system failed at every single level. So we need to work with the judges, we need to work with the prosecutors, we need to work with the police department, we need to work with the mental health treatment, we need to work with the drug addiction treatment. We need to work at every single level to solve this problem, to make sure the resources are there. It's a system failure, it's not one person.
Yeah, I think this is for Mark. Regarding, there was a tremendous number of, probably one-third of the questions are regarding the homeless, homelessness problem in Seattle. This question's a very simple one. Is there enough money in the system right now to solve the problem, or are additional resources needed?
I feel there is enough money in the system right now to address the problem. But it's not Seattle's problem alone. It's a regional problem. And there is a regional approach that looks like it's finally going to make some progress, you know, between Seattle and King County and partnering with the municipalities. But it's not just a government approach either. There are faith-based organizations that are willing to help, willing to step in and willing to contribute. Let's embrace them. Let's partner with them. We have corporations who are willing to step in, who have stepped in, that are willing to be part of the solutions. Let's embrace that. We can get a lot more done working with each other than we can pointing fingers at each other and blaming each other for who caused the problem. Let's work in collaboration, because it's going to take all of us, and it's going to take the folks in this room. It's going to take, you know, everyone in the community. It's going to take the people who are on the street and unstablely housed to want to participate and move forward.
The handful of wealthy families in this country who own most of the industries, Boeing, Amazon, whatever, and have amassed, this tiny ruling class has amassed more wealth than any other country in the history of humanity, ever. And there is money for everything we need. The question is, which class will benefit from the profits that have been wasted, all created only, ever and only, by the labor of working people, farmers? That's, we create the wealth, they have expropriated from us. The wealth exists. The question is, can we exert the political force necessary to change the conditions of our lives?
I think we've pretty much covered this question before. And I think what we really need right now is, anybody here in the room who has kids, you know that you get those toys and you can't follow the directions at all, and you're trying to figure out how to put them together and how the pieces fit right? The instructions for those toys are usually not clear. They've been translated or the words aren't even there, they're just visual images. What we really need to do is make sure that the instructions that we're giving to how to spend the money, to how to solve all these problems is clear. And that you have a guy who can figure out, or a girl who can figure out, how to solve those problems and lay out those instructions very, very clearly. And that's what we need to do with the money, just like everything else. We need to work with all the stakeholders. We need to work with everybody in the city. We need to work with the businesses and find ways to solve it. The Showbox is a perfect example of that. The Showbox, everybody wanted to save it. It was this theater that really hasn't been that exciting since all of this for kids. But we could have had a brand-new theater if we'd sent the developers, hey, I got an idea. If you build a whole bunch of housing above it, set aside a certain amount for affordable housing, build a brand-new theater in the basement, we'll give you some tax breaks and we'll give you all the permits you need. We could have done that, and instead they landmarked the building and now there's lawsuits. There are common sense solutions to these problems.
Yes, we do have enough money, but it's going to take more help. You need the local, you need the local government, you need the federal government, and you also need the state. We need to sit down at the table and talk, talk it out and find out who can put what where. The communities are asking to be a part of it, so if there's people that's in the community, that may be well off more than what some of the others are. You can pitch in. If they want to pitch in, they can pitch in. But I think it goes around to everybody. Like the saying said, it takes a village to raise a child. And you know, when there's hurricanes and when there's things going on, other hazardous, traumatic things going on in other countries, not in other countries, but in other cities and other states. We know that the movie stars and people, they step out and they say, you know what? We have money, we're going to get together. So again, it takes everybody, not just one. But yes, we do have enough money.
Okay, this will be the final question before closing statements. It's very common for people to focus on the negative. Someone who works in talk radio, I could vouch for this. What are some of the positive things the city council has done, and what would you support in the future? Starting with Mark. Oh, sorry, Henry. Henry. I can reread that if you want.
Yeah, please.
It's very common for people to focus on the negative. What are some positive things the city council has done that you would support in the future?
I can't think of any. We've got to build, we've got to build a movement of working people to change this system entirely. Talked about.
All right. Some of them decided not to run again. I like to give credit where credit is due. How about the Mets? So for me, it's really, we need to focus on a city council that talks to everybody, that listens to what everybody has to say. I'm willing to talk to everybody. Those of you who have interacted with me on Facebook and Twitter know that for sure, even if you don't like me very much, I'll talk to anybody I'll meet with anybody, even if they disagree with me. That's the goal. We have to talk to each other. And we all saw the video, we all know what happened. We need to talk to each other, and we need to have the discussions, because that's how you get compromised. That's how you understand where somebody else is coming from, by having those discussions face-to-face and not behind a keyboard. That's how we fix the city, and that's what the city council should be.
Yes, the city has done some positive things. We're so focused on homelessness and some of these other things, sometime you get a little dim. But I've worked at Pioneer Human Services where I work with post-incarcerated men and women. I went out to Mary's Place and I helped the homeless. I work with vets that couldn't find a job. I work with the young youth, 17-years-old, that had been in the juvenile system. And what the city has done for them, the city has started a program where buying the box. So when you get out of prison and you want to get a job, you always have to fill out this little box at the end. Have you been convicted? Have you served jail time? In so many, in so many different words. But now, that person does not have to fill that box out. And that came from the city of Seattle. And since that time, a lot of my students have gone on to work. I even have students now that are leaders of a union. So yes, the city has done that, and the city has done other things, but we don't have enough time to discuss all of them.
In thinking about some of the positive things that the city council has done, I can think about the $15 minimum wage. I can think of the family leave, you know, parental leave. You know, allowing for people to take care of their, you know, their sick relatives, you know, when necessary. I can think of Ben the Box. And while I can spend a lot, we can all spend a lot of time thinking about where the city council has failed. What I want to focus on is where we go from here. What can we do working together? What can we do making sure that the voices of this community are heard? Oh, I think I'm going into closing statements, I'm sorry. Again, it's like what's been talked about before. Let's sit down and get, let's work with each other. I think we can get a lot more done working with each other than yelling at each other.
Okay, well, speaking of that, you might as well stay standing. Closing statements, but you only have 30 seconds on this one.
I am from this community. I was born and raised in this community. I worked in this community for almost 30 years on public safety and quality life issues. I have spent my life in service to others. I've spent most of my adult life in service to this community. I want to continue that service, just at a different level. I want to be accountable to you, accessible to you, and responsive to you. That is something that currently is missing from the city, this current line of city council members. I've heard from people, they are not responsive. I want to be the one who is responsive to you.
I have worked in this community for a long time. I have been out on the streets, working with people that have been injured on the street. I've been injured on the street by, over on Rainier Avenue. I've worked with the people from prison, I've worked with the people from the homeless shelters. I've worked with so many different communities, and I want to continue to do that. Again, like I said earlier, I have struggled along with all the people, a lot of people here in this community, and I want to make sure that I am that voice. Seattle needs a responsive representative leader, one that, one that can represent those that have lived the same experiences of the ones that you're hoping to serve.
We don't need left solutions or right solutions, we need common sense solutions. And when my wife is discussing whether or not we should stay in Seattle and her family's been here for over 100 years, we have real problems we need to solve. I don't want to be the guy who's complaining on Facebook and social media about the problems. I want to be the guy who's out there fixing the problems. I've worked my whole life in service to my community. My parents were very big, and they instilled that in serving their community. They instilled that in me. I want to do the same thing. My family works very hard for the community here, and I just want to make this community a better place so I can go back to work.
The carnage that the working class faces is a result of the normal functioning of production for profit. It's the normal functioning, a result of the normal functioning of capitalism. What we need more than ever, more than anything, is to build, towards building a movement of working people, of farmers, is building unity within our class, bridging the divisions that have been driven between us, between those who have jobs and those who do not, between the homeless and... We need amnesty for all those who are here, working here, wherever their current legal status is. Okay, we need to defend a woman's right to choose abortion.
Okay, that about wraps it up. We want to thank everyone for participating in the forum tonight, especially the candidates who care enough to run for office and serve our city. We all have an important decision to make. We urge all of you to engage in our Democratic process here, support your favorite candidate with your democracy vouchers and donations of time and money. We also encourage the candidates to stick around and get to know the voters here tonight. For a few minutes, talk to your neighbors and friends, get the word out. If you're interested in learning more about Speak Out Seattle, visit their table in the back. We want to thank the Seattle Ethics and Elections Commission for being here and helping with the democracy vouchers and the Millionaire Club for charity for coming. Our next candidate for our district seven, which covers most of downtown Queen Anne Ed Magnolia, on April 17th at 7:00 PM at the Magnolia Community Center. You can also watch it on our live stream on the Speak Out Seattle YouTube channel. This district is an open scene, so it'll be a great chance to hear the candidates in District Seven. Thank you and good night.